Would you please have all rise and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we got some, Mr. Eric, would you call the roll?
Member Smith.
Here.
Member Aldret.
Here.
Member Vanderhayden is absent this evening. Member Hubbard.
Here.
Vice Chair Garza.
Here.
And Chairman Benedict.
Here.
Okay, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we have a set of minutes. It's your wish.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2025 meeting. I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. Okay, we're at the point of our consent agenda and we have one item on the consent agenda. This is considered to be routine, would be enacted with one motion and one roll call vote of the commission. There wouldn't be any separate discussion of this item unless a commission member or a member of the public would request. So request, in that event, we'll pull, pull it from the consent agenda and consider it in the normal sequence. So we'll have a couple of people who'd like to pull it. Thank you very much. Okay, since there's nothing else on our consent agenda. We'll hear that in just a moment. At this point, on the agenda is our public comment section. Now, this is for anything besides the, the item that we will be hearing. If you have any other things that you'd like to express to the commission, please feel free to come forward and talk to us. Seeing none, close that portion. And we will go to item. Consider a request by NRP LLC for a major site plan. Casa Grande Commons Apartment Homes, 336 apartments. DSA 2500058. Jim, talk to us.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. So as you introduced, this request in front of you tonight is for consideration of a major site plan known as Casa Grande Commons Apartments. I'll give you a little bit of details about the request and then also the location information. So this major site plan would be for an apartment complex that's three stories in height, forty feet tall. A total of three hundred and thirty-six units. With the complex comes six hundred and eighty-five parking spaces and it sits on a fifteen acre site. The excerpt of the site plan is on the screen there for you to see. As you can tell, there's a series of buildings that line primarily the perimeter of the site with central open space amenities. It also includes an oversized clubhouse. The intention behind that clubhouse actually, in addition to amenities for the residents, there would also be a community room. And so because of that, the site is actually slightly overparked to accommodate potential events that could be held in that meeting space. The location is at the very end of where Promenade Parkway currently terminates. Like I mentioned, it's a fifteen acre site and it would sit on the east side of Promenade Parkway. The Promenade Shopping Center sits within its own zone district known as the Casa Grande Regional Shopping Center Planned Area Development Zone. This site is actually in a different zone district known as the Casa Grande Commons Planned Area Development Zone District outlined in purple. There's, the majority of it lies north of the promenade, but then there's a little orphan piece there that sits to the east off of Florence and Hacienda. This is a, an aerial image of how Promenade Parkway would be extended. Basically, the south third of the site is alongside the existing portion of Promenade Parkway. And then the roadway would be extended north to the boundary of the development. The Casa Grande Commons Planned Area Development Zone District is five hundred and ninety-one acres in total. And within that Planned Area Development Zone, it allows for a wide mixture of uses, including the entitlement to develop up to a hundred and twenty-three acres for multifamily residential use. Otherwise, the other approved uses within that PAD includes commercial as well as industrial land use. It's, it's a wide variety of uses that are programmed within this area. This isn't the first proposal within this zone district. A couple of years ago, Promenade Village was approved. It was another multifamily residential development. They are in, currently in building permit review phase, although I don't know what their timing or schedule is. But that was for two hundred and nine units and that's the site that I've highlighted in yellow directly off of Mission Parkway. So this would be the second proposed development within the PAD. It would primarily get its access from the extension of Promenade Parkway. As I mentioned, Promenade would be extended to the northern boundary of the site. And it would rely on the street network through the Promenade Shopping Center initially for its trips. However, within this PAD, it calls for a future circulation network, including the extension of Promenade north to Cottonwood and actually beyond to Cortson in the future as areas develop. And then there's also planned east-west connections to Mission Parkway and then further north all the way to Hacienda. The site is also going to accommodate an emergency access ingress and egress at the southeast corner of the property. The plans will modify the, the drainage retention basin that sits directly to the south of that site to accommodate a narrow improved roadway for fire department access that basically lies behind the shopping center there and reaches out to Mission Parkway for an alternative point of access for emergency purposes. When reviewing major site plans, this is the criteria that gets evaluated and the staff report goes into these in greater detail. But I just want to focus on the, these highlighted ones because I think they're the most important. The first criteria that I want to talk about is conformance to the city's general plan. So this is in a unique general plan classification. It's within an area known as large mixed use. There aren't very many of these throughout the city. Phoenix Mart is in a large mixed use general plan category. There may be one other towards the west side of town. I, I'd have to look at our overall general plan map, but the, the intention behind the large mixed use is you have to start off with a minimum number of acres. I believe you have to have at least three hundred and twenty acres of property. And within this general plan category, it allows for an intense variety of uses. Commercial, industrial, as well as residential. Up to fifty percent of a large mixed use area can be developed residentially. And of that fifty percent, twenty percent can be high density residential, up to forty dwelling units per acre. This site is developing around twenty-two dwelling units per acre. So it's well within the general plan density objectives for multifamily. And then the other criteria that I want to talk about is the impact of the plan on the existing and anticipated traffic and parking and access conditions. So as I mentioned previously, this site is going to draw its access through the Promenade Shopping Center. Initially, however, as the site, as the PAD continues to build and there's development both to the north of this site as well as to the west, Promenade Parkway will be extended and ultimately there'll be some east-west connections over to Mission. In the grand scheme of the, of the review of the traffic impact, there was a traffic report prepared by Greenlight Engineering that was submitted with this major site plan and reviewed by the city's traffic consultant. And it found that the amount of trips that were going to be generated by this complex would not affect the level of service of the surrounding roadways to a point where it was brought to a unacceptable level of service. There are capital improvement monies that have recently been directed towards improving Cottonwood at the Mission Parkway intersection. So I don't know if that directly went into the consideration of this traffic impact report or not, but that's just some additional information for your benefit. And this was also reviewed by Arizona Department of Transportation because of the additional trips being placed on to Florence Boulevard, which is State Route 287 east of I-10. I forget that I write all this out and then like, but there it is. At least that shows I have a good memory. And then the other criteria that I want to talk about is elevations. So within this Planned Area Development Zone District, there are some architectural standards for multifamily development. And it also includes examples of what the multifamily development is envisioned to look like. But primarily, it talks about needing to include a minimum of three architectural design elements. In the review of the elevations provided, I found that they have met the minimum of three. The applicant is in attendance tonight to possibly address how potentially they're meeting more than these three. But the project is proposing balconies. They do have pop-outs below the windows and they do have divided light windows. Here is a rendering of the, of the proposed apartment complex. The leasing office has a mixture of materials and colors with awnings over the windows and then the units themselves. Although it's modern style architecture, it does accommodate balconies. There are ledges below windows and then there are a variety of colors. Regarding the public notification process, we did engage in public notification that is within the city code requirements. As a result of the public notification efforts, I did receive several emails which have been provided to the commission. And all three of them did address the desire to not see any additional apartment complexes in Casa Grande. And then specifically at this location, they felt that there would be too much impact on the existing traffic network, namely the Mission Parkway at Cottonwood intersection where the city is planning some improvements. I will say that in general, the, the city has seen a lot of apartment complexes come forward for consideration. This site is going to, if approved, add three hundred and thirty-six more units to, to that supply. However, just some other considerations about that. This is a LI-TIC project where they will utilize tax credits to affect the, to make the units eligible for residents who fall within a lower income tax qualification. And then also in terms of area, this, this contextually is probably one of the better places to contemplate multifamily. Being just at the very north end of the promenade, it'll add some vibrancy potentially to that shopping center. People will be directly across from the theater, some additional shopping opportunities. And this PAD zone does program the extension of some other compatible uses in the future for this development as Promenade Parkway will further be extended north to Cottonwood and beyond. So with that, staff does recommend that Planning Commission move to approve this major site plan subject to some conditions and technical modifications. The conditions are that prior to building permit issuance, the property shall be placed within its own parcel. Currently, it's floating within a larger amount of acreage. And this can either be done through a plat or a parcel split. But prior also, the second condition is prior to building permission, permit issuance, either a map of dedication or a plat is required to dedicate the right of way necessary for Promenade Parkway. Prior to the certificate of occupancy for any building, said map of dedication or plat shall be approved and recorded. Now regarding the technical modifications, they have actually since resubmitted their plans. So it's potential that these four modifications have already been addressed. They're under review, but primarily it, it is some, deals with some cleanup items to more accurately identify drainage and the, the half-street improvements for Promenade. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner, question staff, yes, sir?
I have a question, Jim. In regards to the traffic improvements that you mentioned at Cottonwood, could you elaborate more about that?
Certainly, I, I'm going, I, I hate doing this, but we have a better expert on that than myself, so I'll defer to Clark.
Yeah, Tuesday, we, Public Works gave a presentation to council in the study session to review a couple of options. We have done sufficient studies to know that A's improvements are warranted. Either a signalized intersection or a roundabout is also been proposed as an alternate. So we had a discussion Tuesday night about the pros and cons of each one of those two alternatives. Public Works has been tasked with answering several questions that the council had. And we're in the process of answering those questions and, and hope to have them answered next week so that we can go back to the next council and, and have another study session to, to complete the presentation of information. But we will be looking at an improvement to manage the traffic and, and make the situation safer.
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I think it's important to note that those, so some of the questions I had were not addressed in the staff report, so I asked staff for a copy of the TIA. That capital improvement project was not referenced in the staff report. So it felt like it was lacking in some information when it comes to transportation and circulation, but Clark and I had a discussion. This roundabout or these improvements at this intersection have to be installed in order for this development to be at the level of service that it needs to be. So I wanted to ask Clark to make sure that the city had that on the plans of the future because it needs to be installed by the end of '26 in order for this to get, to the, for this TIA to be approved. So if that makes sense for everybody to understand.
Yeah, to, to, to complement what council, Garza mentioned is it is a city CIP project. So the city will be building the improvements for that intersection. It is in the CIP program for this year, so we'll go ahead and have it designed and have it built.
So assuming that, assuming that council approves, you said it was going back before council?
We hope to get in the October, October agenda again for, to answer their questions.
Okay, so assuming that council approves at that point, how long would you expect before the intersection was completed?
It would fiscal year '27. It would be consistent with what would approximately be the construction and occupancy of, of this particular project.
We've, we've seen them build faster than that. We have also seen them take a lot longer than that, so I kind of wonder if we're not going to have, you know, one, one before, we would all like to have that intersection prepared before they have occupancy. And, you know, the way construction goes, you got two projects that could go different timing. I don't know, it's concerning, there's nothing, you know, understicking. Any other questions? Yes?
I have one other question in regards to the traffic. I noticed that you have the entrance point off of Florence and Mission Parkway. If I recall, there's a light there. There's also one just before, that's where the Chick-fil-A and the In-N-Out Burger intersection is. That actually gets very congested on the weekends, especially as it leads to the Promenade Parkway. Are you looking to put some sort of a light there or some other sort of intersection to break up that traffic and to manage that?
There wouldn't be any other intersection added along Florence to, and, and I think that's your question.
Well, no, not an intersection, but you have it where it actually meets, where the two actually.
Where Promenade Way meets Promenade Parkway.
Okay, all right, all right, okay, thank you for clarification.
And so are you going to set up some sort of a stoplight there? Right now, it's just a stop sign and it's oftentimes dangerous.
Yeah, yeah. We were talking about that this afternoon in the office. Yes, the answer to your question is yes, we have analyzed that intersection. It doesn't warrant a traffic signal yet at this point in time. But we did discuss an alternate means of using stop control there. Currently, the stop control is on the entry road on Promenade Parkway. Promenade Way, the four-lane roadway is free flow. Typically, up to a mall, the entry road is free flow and the circulatory road within the mall, it comes to a stop. And that way, as the rush of traffic from the traffic signal on Florence Boulevard flows in, that there isn't that backup. It would tend to be a, a safer situation regarding the backup and then the turn movements that occur in our, in conflict further to the south that get into the, the mall proper, into the shops area. So we're looking at that, we'll probably do a quick assessment, run some, some models to verify that it would improve the conditions. But yes, this summer, we did take a look at the subject intersection, recognizing that the traffic volumes are increasing and, but we're still not at a point. the traffic volumes are increasing and, but we're still not at a point where a signal is warranted.
Okay. What about pedestrian traffic as that actually builds out, especially with the two projects, once they're approved?
The, so within the frontage of the project that we're discussing tonight, they have the sidewalk, they have the pedestrian facilities along the street that are required. Again, to the intersection Promenade Way and Parkway, we also talked about that. It lacks crosswalks today. And in one of the corners, I believe it was the northwest corner, one of the corners does not have even the ramps in place and sidewalks in that corner. So we're going to be taking a look at that and seeing what needs to be done. Keep in mind that some of this is on private land and some of it is on, on city land. So we are also, conversation got further into, is that the appropriate ownership? So a lot of discussion is needed there before we do anything to change that condition. But we observe that installing traffic signal may be challenging because of the way the land ownership is at. Thank you. Yep.
And then how about Cottonwood Lane? I mean, there's going to be more traffic getting onto Cottonwood Lane. Are we going to be widening at all? Because it's only two, it's, it goes from four lanes to two lanes to one.
Right. It goes from four lanes to two lanes in each direction of travel.
Yeah, to one, yeah.
To two lanes, one lane in each direction of travel, about a half mile to the west of I-10. So with regard to the long-term plans for the city, the answer that I would give you is no. There's no plans to do that. We have, we have so many needs in the city. There's call for interchange, new interchange at Quartzon off of I-10. There's an, almost an immediate need for improvements to the I-10 McCartney Road interchange. And the ADOT recently approved a project to improve the interchange with Penal Avenue and I-10. So there's a lot going on and there's a lot of demand building up. The city is investing a lot of money in McCartney Road to make that a four-lane all the way to I-10. And the existing two-lane roadway is already using most of the safe capacity of the interchange at I-10 and McCartney. So as we four-lane that road, there'll be pressure to do that. You know, we're, we're putting a strategy together to try and get ADOT to get involved, to assist us with some improvements there. So a lot going on. But everything that you're observing, we recognize and, and are working towards a solution.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
No. I have another question. Where are we at on the 2030 plan? I know we used to have like, how many?
Housing study.
Pardon me?
The housing study.
The housing study, like where are we on apartments and housing? Are we to fruition? I know we should be close on how many apartments, everything.
So we're wrapping up the housing study. We just reviewed the last draft. We had a few more comments for them, so I anticipate that'll go before council, before the end of the year.
So where were we a year ago? Were we in excess? Yeah.
Or were we needing multifamily?
The number of housing apartment units, you know, for years, there were none constructed in Casa Grande. And so we've seen a large influx because of the market demand for apartments. The housing study is identifying that it will take some time for the market to catch up with the number of multifamily units that are being proposed.
Cause I remember.
I believe they have a timeframe of six years, once they're, once they're constructed.
I just, cause Paul gave us a report, and I could have sworn we were pretty close at like six, eight months ago on apartment complex. Not on 55-plus, but on apartment complexes per se.
Well, and for clarifications, there, I think we're talking about two studies.
Okay, yes.
The first one, a year ago, year and a half, was an in-house study that was done where we looked at all of the land that was entitled for multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
And of that land, what was currently being processed for major site plan approval? And then of that, how many of those were actually coming off the ground?
Right.
And so you're right, we, we did arrive at the conclusion that we meet the supply for multifamily. But we, we recognize that there were probably some areas that would still be underserved, and that would be for the 55 and up segment of the population. And then certain areas of town, such as downtown, where there's kind of the expectancy for a mixture of residential right next to commercial, et cetera. But then, the more recent study is one that we've actually contracted with a consultancy to look very closely at the numbers with respect to the goal of providing affordable housing and what would have to be accommodated to meet those objectives. And so I think that, the conclusion of that's going to be more refined in terms of what, where we're at with the total number.
And that one's six months out, you said?
The approval of, or the presentation of that before, yeah, well, it'll be completed before the end of the year. So in, in general, staff is currently not supportive of zone changes for more multifamily, but this is not the case. This is already an entitled project within that PAD.
Okay.
But staff is supportive of low-income housing like this, Lytec.
No.
And strategically placed housing, as Jim mentioned, maybe near our downtown, near large commercial areas where it could use some more foot traffic to support that, to support the retail in that area, Lytec projects.
No, I agree. We do need more affordable housing, you know, for our residents and everything. So, you know, it's true.
So the, the, I'll call it the Paul-Ty study.
No.
Would this have been counted? Or is this going to be on top of the numbers that we saw on that?
We did count it on one of the studies in terms of entitled property, because this had been entitled back in 2022.
Yeah, that, I guess was my, was my thought, that this would have been part of that number that we had seen in there that was. Yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant or their representative like to address the commission, please? Please give us your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Austin Cates with the NRP Group, Vice President of Development of the NRP Group for the state of Arizona. So commissioners, I appreciate everyone's time this evening to consider the Casa Grande Commons apartment project. I thought Jim did a very detailed and good job, so I'll try not to be too repetitive here. And I'll kind of touch on, you know, why we like this opportunity, what brought us to this opportunity, and why we think it's a, going to be a value add for the city of Casa Grande and contribute to a lot of public benefit for the city. So just quickly highlighting, I know Jim mentioned 336 units, three-story garden-style product, parked over two-point stalls per unit, so ample parking for the residents. You know, one element that Jim touched on was our inclusion of a community room. So we're envisioning this as a 2,000-square-foot space in our clubhouse to serve the community. You know, we've talked to and considered, you know, having United Way a nonprofit operate out of there. We've, are working on scheduling with CAC to use that as a, you know, after-school tutoring space, also trying to get in touch with Sunlife, the new hospital there, to see if there's any programs that we can include in the space. And, you know, we're still going through the vetting process of what's going to be the best fit for the project. But those are the, some of the, you know, tenants or occupants we're looking to include with our project to create some public good for the community, given that we have the space available to, to do so. I think, you know, all of your considerations and concerns for the project are valid. I think our project does offer something unique relative to a lot of the existing supply. In the city of Casa Grande, for example, we're offering ones, twos, threes, and four-bedroom units. So as the cost of living has increased substantially over the past couple of years, and specifically for, for families, to be able to offer rent-restricted apartments for larger families, you know, with our four-bedroom units, we feel like we're, we're serving an underserved element of the Casa Grande community, as well as our ones, twos, and threes, which, you know, can cater to the elderly, can cater to students, can cater to individuals, and crosses a wide spectrum of Casa Grande residents that we can serve. And then, you know, in addition to the community room, we've got other amenities that current projects don't currently have in town. Going down the list, you know, we've got your typical gym and pool, but we have a soccer field, we have a volleyball court, we have a playground. We have, we're, you know, we're creating an ecosystem within, you know, the Promenade and Casa Grande Commons PAD that doesn't currently exist. There's no apartments east of I-10, so we'll offer residents, you know, access to, if their jobs are elsewhere in Pinel County or even Maricopa or Pima County, you know, they can call home, they can call our project home base and have, you know, walkable to the movie theater, walkable to restaurants, walkable to commercial shopping that doesn't really currently exist in a, you know, more suburban city like, like Casa Grande. You know, we've had substantial communications with Lamar Companies, who's the owner of the commercial center, the Promenade Parkway. They're extremely supportive, and we worked with them to get an easement to have our fire access lane through their property. They're, you know, praying and hoping that we get our project through because, you know, having more rooftops east side of the 10 with residents that have walkability to their commercial facilities, you know, 100,000 of square feet will bode well for existing tenant base, as well as a recruitment of additional and higher-end tenants at the Promenade. So, you know, we, let's move forward. We originally, let's see, come on.
Is it easier for me to move it?
Yeah, I got the click down now. You know, we were originally drawn to this site because of its proximity to commercial and because of its proximity to, you know, access on Interstate 10. You can see through the list here, it's got a robust list of commercial options for future residents. And, you know, as I've kind of harped on, the walkability just is, isn't something that's all too frequent, even in, you know, the Phoenix MSA. So to offer that for residents here in Casa Grande, I think will be very well received, especially with, you know, two, three, and four-bedroom units where families have, you know, families and children, and, you know, they can go to, with them to a movie and walk and not have to worry about getting everyone in the car or, you know, getting on the bus. So we feel like we're creating a, you know, healthy and balanced ecosystem for residents that choose to live at our property. And then, you know, while we've seen apartments, a lot of new construction apartments in the city of Casa Grande, you know, early in our assessment of the health of the Casa Grande market from a housing supply standpoint and the supply-demand fundamentals that exist, you know, these statistics available on the city of Casa Grande's website were one of the reasons and really selling points to our internal team of, you know, this is a community that's growing rapidly, a county that's growing rapidly, and the only way to attract new businesses and to, you know, prevent substantial cost of living growth and preserve affordability is to offer essential housing and meet the demands of the community. So while there may be short-term supply, the long-term fundamentals prove that there's, you know, going to be demand and is existing demand and future demand for additional housing, and specifically Lytec housing, which we're providing to residents making 60% of AMI or below. So, you know, not to read off the slide here, but, you know, Pinel County saw 24 new companies, bringing 12,000 new jobs and a capital investment of three-point, 13.6 billion. You know, that was just through 2024. In years 2020, you know, through 2024 and through 2025, you see continuous job announcements of companies relocating to, relocating or expanding to Casa Grande. And that's the continued demand that we're trying to meet by building housing now. That's ultimately going to be delivering in 20, in late '27 or even 2028. So we're really catering to the future demand of the city. Go, 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 go. Quickly, as, yeah, I included these aerials. I know Jim had these in his presentation, so I'll move, move quickly here. But we've gone with a, you know, desert modern architecture with natural, natural colors that jive well with the promenade's existing aesthetic. And like I mentioned, substantial and ample open space and community space for 336 units in, you know, which equates to even, even more residents that will get to benefit from a, you know, ecosystem that promotes health, healthy living, affordable living, and accessibility to, you know, commercial options at the Promenade and, and elsewhere in the city. So with that, I'll open the floor to, to any questions.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Actually, a couple. This is a nice development, and I think it looks really great. Typically, in many large cities like a Chandler or Scottsdale, that's usually a luxury apartment complex of some kind. So those individuals are typically easy to have their own transportation. This is sort of aiming towards a population of a low-income, right? Did you consider at the time the lack of public transportation running there from the Promenade or to grocery stores or any grocery stores in the area? Because as it's built right now, it's sort of on a, in a food desert.
Yep, 100% agree. And we've actually met with Mayor Fitzgivens and discussed this topic specifically. She was supportive of extending the bus that goes along Florence Boulevard to our property, such that residents can commute, you know, to, you know, any and all establishments along Florence Boulevard. So a very fair consideration, and that's something that we hope we can accomplish, is extending the route to, to our project and through the Promenade. And I believe there's an on-demand service within the city of Casa Grande as well from a, from a bus system that we discussed as well would be a great resource, whether it's, you know, a scheduled service, even though it's on-demand, if we can have a scheduled service for residents in the morning that are looking to commute into town. Those are some of the items we discussed with the mayor.
And then I figured you'd probably banking on the target opening before you guys.
Would love to.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can, hopefully our project will help, you know, helping get there.
Yeah. What, what is your guys' timeline looking like?
Yep. So we're looking to start construction on this in about Q3, end of Q3, 2026. So call it September would be our timeline to start construction, perhaps between July and September. And first unit delivery would likely then be at the end of 2027. And then, you know, a continued delivery of buildings thereafter, such that our final certificate of occupancy would likely be Q2 2028.
Thank you. So it sounds like Cottonwood and Mission's going to be completed by the time you guys are looking.
Yes, I, I arrived at that conclusion as, as he was talking about that.
Okay, sounds great.
And do you have any other apartment complex like this?
Nationally, yes. In Arizona, we have smaller projects that we built in the early 2000s.
Okay.
Nationally, NRP is one of the largest affordable housing developers. We're actually probably the largest developer that does both luxury and affordable housing. We've developed over 60,000 units nationally. And we're one of the handful of companies that do both. And so we try to bring our luxury expertise into affordable housing. And you can see these buildings, the amenities, we're mindful in the product that we're delivering. We're also vertically integrated, so we're a general contractor, we're the developer, we're the general contractor, and we're the property manager. So for a project like this, you know, we'll build it ourselves. The NRP contractors will be the contractors, so we get to manage the execution to ensure that our vision and execution, our execution is in line with our vision. And then we're the property manager. So our expectation for a project like this is we'll own it for about 15 years. So we really get to see the vision all the way through from, you know, first occupancy for, you know, 15, at least 15 years thereafter.
And do you know what, like a one-bedroom would rent for?
Um, yes, it will be about, don't quote me on this, around 1,300, I believe, 1,200.
And then what would be a four-bedroom?
A four-bedroom closer to 1,800. Seven, seven, 1,700, I believe.
So basically, everything would be like 1,800 and below?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So now, I'd like to open the public portion of the meeting for this issue. Anybody from the public that would like to address it, please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record. And try to keep your comments within, we'll give everybody three minutes, and hopefully. And hopefully there won't be too much repetition of the same, same comments that somebody before you has. And, and, and of course, if it's your concern, we'd like to hear it, but let's not take too long. You have three minutes. Let's try to stick to it if you can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I, I have, thank you for coming, visiting with us tonight. I have a question. According to the newspaper.
For the record.
Oh, one.
Name and address, please.
Twelve forty-seven North Hacienda.
Thank you, sir.
According to the paper, this community is relying on a low income housing tax credit for financing. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay. And is that, is that, but since we've had a lot of cut, but cut in fundings lately, is that an issue?
Um, no, it's not. It's through a tax credit program. So it's not direct funding, it's an allocation of tax credit.
Mr. Chair, if she can ask her questions and then.
Yeah, so.
Then be answered.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, so if you could ask the question, we'll try to take note of it.
Got it.
And then we'll try to get, get those questions addressed.
Okay, sounds good.
After, okay?
All right, thank you.
Oh, that it?
That's it.
All right. Anybody else like to address this issue?
My name is Mary Ann Remini. I live in the Mission Royale Active Adult Community. The address is twenty-three ninety-six East Hancock Trail. I've been a full-time resident here since two thousand and thirteen. And first off, I would like to thank you all for the job that you do because I know it's not easy. And I've spoken with Jim before, years ago, with the Sam's Club situation and everything. First off, I'd like to say that I think we have probably far too many apartment complexes going up right now in Casa Grande. If you look, and I have done my research at most of them Mesa Vista, Agave, Tierra Point. There are new ones being built on O'Neill Drive, on Trekkle, Desert Sands, Solano, which is the luxury thing. All of them are begging for tenants. Two months free rent and amenities to boot. In my daughter's apartment complex, which is Tierra Point, they currently have thirty vacant units available right now. And that's pretty much the case at all of these places. And I think that another low income. Complex where it's going to be located is a bad idea at this point in time. What I am really, really concerned about is the traffic situation. As I said, I'm a full-time resident. I see what goes on, on Florence and Mission Parkway and the Promenade Way. But especially at Mission Parkway and Cottonwood. And I'm going to tell you, all of those agricultural trucks that just fly down Cottonwood. And you're talking three and four bedroom apartments with a lot of kids. What's going to happen when we have school buses that got, that have to pick those kids up because those residents are low income? Many of them may not have cars. And it's a very good point about how are they going to get to a grocery store? It's a pretty, you know, it's, it's about four miles for me to get to Fries on Florence Boulevard. I just, I, I can't see that it's going to be a good situation whatsoever. And when you were talking about your rent, okay, my daughter pays under fourteen hundred and it's not a low income complex. So what kind of clientele are we going to get? We already have a number of, of complexes in the city that were built that are low income. Again, Agave House is up and running. They have a lot of vacancy. There's City Center, there's Courtyard, okay, there's a multitude of things, Mesa Vista, all of those. Do we really need one more right now? I was here in twenty twenty-two when it was first proposed. And we were under the impression that it was going to be more luxury apartments, probably catering to the clientele that are. Sorry.
Are you good? No, you're fine.
Am I okay?
Well, it's very short.
I'll try, okay? Catering to the clientele that are out there, which are retired people. And this is the one thing that I would like to say that I'm disappointed about.
That wasn't the idea. Yeah.
Is the lack of notice of publication. We have thirteen hundred homes in Mission Active Adult. Anytime you drive down on our trash pickup day, you can tell right now that probably eighty-five percent of those people aren't there right now. They may be full-time residents, many of them are not, but they're not here in the summer. Those notices went out in August. Most of those people, I wasn't here when the first notice went out. I just found out. So I guess what I'd like to say to you all is, if you're really going to consider this, can you at least wait till? Most of that community gets back so they can have a voice and know what's really going on because I don't think it's fair.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this issue?
Hello, I'm Kami Reese, but I'm here for my mother. She lives on eleven oh one North Hacienda Road. She just had surgery, so she's like, please go represent me. And so she lives right on, you know, Hacienda, which is one of the, right by Cottonwood, it parallels with. Parallels with Mission. Tell me the world anyways where she lives. But, but yeah, you know, we just worry about the abandonment, right? You build these buildings and then no one relies on them. She looks at Phoenix Mark that's over here, that it's completely abandoned, you know? Where you have lots of areas, the promenade, lots of empty buildings. Like we don't want apartments taken by our space and then have them empty. I love that the lady before us just talked about, there's a lot of room in Casa Grande. There's a lot of buildings that aren't filled. Let's use those first before we add more building. You know, the low income, everybody does need a place to live, but Target closed down because of all the shoplifting. Like we do want people to move in, but we also want nice areas and people that will build up that community, that promenade. So I just think about things and make sure we're doing the right thing, so.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address this issue? All right, all right. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and like to call the applicant up again, please. Now, can you answer the question about light, I think, I believe the description would be Lytec funding?
Yes, I, you know, I guess via, you know, in today's news and recent bills passed, there's been, I think. You know, acknowledgement of funding cut for specific programs. And specifically for Lytec, you know, and specifically in the big beautiful bill, they identified housing as a, you know, critical need and element. And so there were, what, there was legislation included in, in the big beautiful bill. That doesn't directly impact funding, but creates actually an easier path to build more affordable housing, becoming less restrictive. So to answer your question specifically, there wasn't specific funding related to the project that we're trying to build. That was cut, that would disable it from proceeding or having resources available us to, available to us to proceed or execute on the project. And rather for the specific program that we're pursuing and utilizing to build this. There were, there was legislation adjusted in the bill to actually. Have a, not easier, but less restrictive path towards accessing the resources available. Both federally and at a local level. A long-winded answer, but.
So while we got you here, and I didn't ask this earlier, but one of the things that has come up in some of our other meetings. And I think is, I don't know, important to me, I guess. The styling of this building, I call it almost brutalist. It's pretty, you know, it's very modern and, and you're in a, the Southwest. Any consideration to having a little bit? I mean, the, you know, this type of building could go anywhere and, and, and I. It really reminds me, one of the things that I, is, is what I saw in, in Bratislava about thirty years ago. And this styling, and so for me personally, it gets me hard. But I just wanted to hear your comments about, describe for me the process or not the whole process.
Yeah.
Have any comments to go along with the styling?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we hire a design team, an architect for the project. And specifically we've hired Builtform and I know they have, you know, twenty-five years of experience in the desert Southwest. And, you know, we've pursued a design that fits within the requirements of the PAD and the descriptive elements of the PAD. So that's really what's guided our approach to design to, you know, up to this date is, you know, figure what, figure out what our box is with the PAD requirements. And, you know, have our experienced architect design a building that we think looks, looks pretty sharp. You know, whether it's your, your preferred style of architecture. I'll leave that to you, but, but we, we personally thought the, the outcome that they've provided and presented here. Number one checks, you know, meets the expectations of the PAD as well as the city code. As well as, you know, it's generally been an architect that's produced product that's been well received in the marketplace.
Gotcha. Okay, I appreciate that comment. Don't particularly like it.
How about the soccer field? I think the soccer field's awesome.
Don't particularly like it, but I, I hear what you're saying and, and I very much appreciate that, that, you know, that your, your stated goal there was to, you know, the guidelines that we have presented to you.
Yeah, from day one.
And, you know, so that's, that's, you know, I got to argue with everybody else when, basically what that comes down to about our guidelines. So thank you, appreciate that. Anything else for him? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Staff, any comments that you'd like to make about the notification process? You want to expound on that any or?
So we did do mailings of postcards beyond the three hundred foot. But actually our code states two hundred feet, but we, we did it to a five hundred foot notification.
Thank you.
As well as publication in the Casa Grande Dispatch, which I think is what generate, in this instance, I think that's what generated the most of the attention. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. If you need more specifics.
No, I just, you know, just wanted to kind of address the concerns that had been expressed. We do, we do see, you did provide us, I don't remember how many, several emails here. So there's, so there is some, you know, there's some responses and. I just, just appreciate that part. All right. Yep.
I, I was just going to say, I, we do frequently hear that concern about just not knowing about it or. Not being available for the meeting and we are working at creating a place on the website. That will have all of the developments that are being proposed on a map. Available for public comment. And then also it'll be helpful because there'll be a more known way of how to contact someone about it. Cause I think sometimes that people might know of something or they, or they, they've heard something, but they don't know who to reach out to. So I think once we get that up on the website, that will really help direct people to the right place and give them the right information.
Okay, very good. Okay, Commissioners, I think we're at the point, it's back to us.
Okay.
Talk to us.
I just want to say, I think this is a great project, especially with the locations in the mall right now. I think, again, I've lived here my entire life, so since nineteen ninety-seven. So I've seen that mall develop into a mall. It used to not be anything. And so also seeing the Target go in and then leave and the Best Buy go in and then leave and the Sports Authority go in and then just completely destroy the company. But that, seeing all of that happen in this mall, it's kind of been disheartening as a resident. Because it, it shows that there's just not that demand for some of these larger tenants. And I would love to see those larger tenants in this mall. And I think the best way for that demand to be created is through putting housing near it, making it much more attractive for those tenants. Because, I mean, when you're doing an indoor market on a Saturday in one of your largest spaces, you're struggling to, to gain those tenants. And so I think when we have those spaces that we also hear from residents all the time clamoring for more commercial services. We have the spaces for them, but we just don't have the ability to attract those people. And so this is one of those projects that if we support it, we can help attract those people to our mall and provide more of those commercial services. And, and different commercial services that many people are, are hoping and wishing are coming to Casa Grande. So that's where I, I really see the, the vision with putting this, this type of project in the mall and in the area, especially. And, and making that architecturally fit with the rest of the mall. I don't think it would make much sense to, to go and put a red tile clay roof on this project because it'd kind of stick out like a sore thumb, considering the rest of the, the, the development that happens there.
You and I disagree.
But yeah, so I, I do think it's a great project and I, I know the concerns that are out there. It sounds like the city is very aware of those and are, and is working towards making sure that this project, once it does go online, that, that traffic is safe. And so I, I think this is a great project and fully supportive of it.
Very good. Mark, can I, I don't want to get too far out of order, but I had another question for the, the applicant. Be okay to call him back up?
Yeah, you, yeah, you're free.
Thank you very much. If, if you'd be all right, yeah, if you'd be so kind. There was some comments about basically the, the, the market volume. You know, that we've got, we've got a whole lot of apartments that, that aren't filled. Can you, can you expound quickly on your analysis, your company's analysis of that and any comments about that quickly?
Yeah, you know, our, our main competitor that exists today is Agave House, which, you know, has experienced its lease up. And is, you know, last I checked, a hundred percent occupied. So for us, that proves out the man that, you know, while there is existing supply and it, it was a competitive process to get there, they're a hundred percent occupied. And now, you know, there needs to be somewhere else for new residents that locate to Casa Grande to live or, you know, residents that want to sell their home and, you know, move to an apartment. And, you know, the growth of Casa Grande isn't stopping. I think, you know, we look at, as much as we look at supply, we also have to look at demand and future demand. And, you know, I'm sure you can't look back to a year where Casa Grande hasn't grown by, you know, a thousand, two thousand, three thousand people. And I, all projections show that, that growth is going to continue to, to occur. And you see that in the jobs that are relocating to Casa Grande. So, you know, low interest rates provided and it created an environment that allowed for a lot of develop, development to occur. And we're seeing those buildings come to fruition now. And that's why there's kind of the supply shock. But long-term, we believe that that's going to become much more balanced and healthy environment. And, you know, ultimately like the demand's going to continue to keep pace with supply, especially in a more controlled supply environment. That should, you know, be for the years to come, given the higher interest rate environment and challenging development environment that exists today.
All right, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, I'm back, we're back to you, gentlemen. What's your, where were you on? Where were you at? Any comments to lift?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the major site plan DSA twenty-five zero 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 five eight.
Okay. Motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Just to confirm, I wasn't with the conditions, obviously, just assuming. I didn't hear you say it, so I just wanted to make sure. With the conditions.
Okay, and the second, with the conditions, very good. Yes.
No discussion on the motion. Yeah, I'm just, I'm struggling with this one. This has got two strikes for me as far as the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure doesn't support the situation. The roundabout is great, but you have a problem at the intersection of Promenade Way and. The roundabout is great, but you have a problem at the intersection of Promenade Way and Promenade Parkway that isn't funded, isn't designed. And it, seventy percent of this traffic is coming from Florence Boulevard. So that bothers me because today it's a problem, it's a site distance problem for folks to be able, be able to make that left turn. So that's one thing. And the second thing, I already forgot because, oh, the housing study. I don't, I don't want to prove, I don't want to prove everything. We have a supply that needs to be filled. And we have enough at this moment, so that's where I'm at.
Okay.
I'm the same. I want to see the, the housing supply.
Okay. You guys, any?
I gave my comments.
I just feel, we just need a little bit more information before we can make this decision.
Okay.
Yeah, my big concern again is, is the traffic, is managing not only the, the car traffic, but the pedestrian traffic.
Can we table this until we find out, you know, the city, what city council decides about the roundabouts and everything?
Uh, we can table it. You're going to have to get somebody to withdraw their motions, so. And I don't know, you know, if, if that's.
That's okay, okay.
Yep. Okay. Okay. More discussing. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
No.
Member Alderett?
Aye.
Member Hubbard?
No.
Vice Chair Garza?
No.
Chairman Benedict?
Well. Geez, I'm not the last vote. Um, yeah, I, I guess I have the, the chat, the cross challenge with my friend over here about, um, you know, the, this, uh, this design is, and, um, concerned about the traffic. We're always going to be playing catch-up as we, as we continue to grow. Um, so, um, I guess I'd vote yes. This is your property. You should do with it. You followed our guidelines. You followed our rules. Should be able to do what you want. But the vote's three to two, so motion fails. Okay, next, uh, reports from the planning director. I think that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Um, so the code revisions that you recommended to council for approval will go before council, their first meeting in October. And you have two meetings in October, your normal meeting on October second. And you're, there'll be a second meeting for a major plan, major general plan amendment. And we're pretty sure it's October sixteenth, but I didn't put it on my calendar yet.
Oh, we're pretty sure? We don't, we don't know for sure what the date is?
Pretty sure, yeah. Jim's more sure than I am, but that's.
I'll put it on.
And I won't be there for either one of them.
Yeah, okay. You gotta tell me if it's going to be different, all right, that's all.
We'll let you know.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right.
When does the, when does the public involvement plan go before the city council?
The first meeting in October.
Oh, okay, okay. Make sure to watch that one. Okay.
You should go, give your opinion. Okay. Um, where are we at? You have monthly reports. Are you a motion to adjourn? Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.